Good morning. I will now call the August 16th San Diego County Board of Supervisors and In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Meeting to order. Let me ask the clerk, please, call the roll.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Vargas. And Chair Fletcher.
Fletcher here. Before we begin, I want to say, I know we're going to recognize you all in a little bit, but a special welcome to our Little Leaguers who are here. It is wonderful to have you with us this morning. I don't know how many of you saw, we saw one of the greatest demonstrations of sportsmanship I've ever seen in the Little League World Series with the young kid got hit in the head and got to first base and the pitcher was upset and went over and consoled him. And during a week where Padre fans were a little disheartened by the actions of some of our players, we were reminded that let the kids play is about what you all can teach us and show us. So we welcome you to our meeting. Sheriff, wonderful to see you here as well. We will begin today's meeting with the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Jamie Gates from Point Loma Nazarene University. I ask everyone to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to follow.
For those of you who will bow your heads. Gracious God, we pause for a moment in our busy day at the opening of this County Board of Supervisors meeting to remember that life is a gift. So we take a deep breath and we remember that every day you give us breath. You wake us up and you start us on our way, and this is a gift. We remember the gift of family and friends who love us and they continue to give us strength and hope for coming here and doing hard work that needs done. We remember the gift of neighbors we greeted and we drove past on our way to this meeting today and the coworkers that we come to interact with during the day. The ones we like and the ones we have a hard time liking. The ones that we agree with and those with whom we disagree. They too share in your grace. Remind us to keep this gift of life, of grace, at the center and it will help us overcome the great temptation to polarization. That polarization that threatens to tear us apart. It might even help us, remind us to do the difficult task of loving our neighbors. So with this gift of life and grace given to us, we come to this meeting to work for the common good. We ask for guidance and wisdom as our representatives deliberate and make decisions that will impact us all and all of our neighbors in this county. We ask for guidance and wisdom for them to use the resources and the power that they wield in a just and equitable way, a way that leads to a true common good. And we pray that we and each of our supervisors be especially mindful of the most vulnerable in our midst. Those who don't have a roof over their heads. Those who are in prison and whose families of those who are in prison. Those who would not afford, could not afford to come down here and have their voice heard. Those by virtue of not being of the dominant racial or language group have less access. Help us all to live more open-handed when it comes to our fellow residents. So I pray very particularly this morning for Norma Vargas, for Joel Anderson, for Tara Lawson-Reamer, for Nathan Fletcher, and for Jim Desmond, that you give them the strength and wisdom to bring their best selves to this meeting and to this day. And I pray for the rest of us that we are able to bring our best selves to this meeting and to this day. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Gates. The Pledge of Allegiance would be delivered virtually by Ms. Norma Gonzalez's first grade class from Calvin Lauterbach Elementary Chula Vista School District. We welcome our first graders. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ready to go?
Go ahead. Please place your right hand over your heart. There you go. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so very much for joining us today. Have a great day at school.
Thank you.
I wish my kids were back in school. I want to welcome our district attorney, Summer Stephan. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. Thank you for being here. We will now proceed with our proclamations. I'll be giving the first proclamation to Home Start and we asked them to join me at the podium. For every child in San Diego to have a safe, stable, and nurturing home, this is the very simple mission of Home Start, a fantastic organization we're honoring this morning. So many of us know personally the impact of disruptions, instability, and challenges in their childhood and to know that there are folks there to make sure that every child is loved and given an opportunity to have a wonderful and successful life truly is one of the greatest jobs and missions that there can be. It's also at times one of the most challenging and difficult endeavors and as a board, we've made a high priority on working to fight for every single child and we greatly appreciate our partners who are leaders who have been doing this work for so long. This year marks the 50th anniversary of Home Start. In 1972, it was founded as one of 16 national Head Start demonstration sites to address the effectiveness of home visitation, to prevent child abuse, and to ensure foster healthy child development. Home Start understands the only way to effectively prevent and treat child abuse is to address the conditions that lead to that environment. Poverty, unsafe neighborhoods, lack of affordable housing, instability, mental health and substance abuse treatment. At the same time, they address each client as an individual, recognizing there are varying emotional needs and varying circumstances that required a tailored approach to what they do. They provide their services to children and families throughout San Diego County. They currently have five programs designed to strengthen families and protect children's. Programs like their maternity housing program, First Five First Steps, which offer crucial housing, education, and wraparound services to families in need. Their Communities in Action Program provides employment services, financial coaching, income self-sufficiency efforts to help those families live a stable, healthy, and thriving life. And all of their programs are based on proven practices to try and stop and prevent abuse within families and provide the support that every parent needs to be in a situation to properly love and care for their children. And so we're here today to honor their work and to really pay recognition of 50 years of service and the thousands of lives that have been touched and have been positively impacted. The work that they do often goes unseen and unnoticed by the broader public, but I want here today for us as a board and a county to recognize and therefore be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the Board of Supervisors this 16th day of August, that we commend Home Start for their service, leadership, dedication, and commitment to the children in San Diego County and do hereby declare this day to be Home Start Day throughout San Diego County. Let's give them a big round of applause. And I'd like to welcome Laura and Cameron. Please.
Thank you. Thank you so much Supervisor Fletcher and distinguished county members. Our partnership has been long-lasting with the county of San Diego and we began as a very small program with a mission of really focusing on children and families who are the most vulnerable and need us the most. And so I'm very proud to say we continue to serve the most vulnerable children and families in San Diego through seven key program areas. Our mission is about assuring the safety and resiliency of children and strengthening families and we could not do it without our numerous partners, including the county of San Diego. So on behalf of all of our staff and our Board of Directors and the thousands and thousands of lives we're privileged to touch, I thank you for this recognition on this very special day.
Anyone else? You good? All right, come on, take a picture. Our next proclamation will be from Vice Chair Vargas and myself honoring the one and only Kathleen Elizabeth Harmon. And I would like to ask Ms. Harmon to please join Vice Chair Vargas and myself. Good morning, Ms. Harmon. So we're honored, Vice Chair Vargas and myself, to present this proclamation to our dear friend, known as Queen Mother Kathleen Harmon, a longtime leader fighting for justice in southeast San Diego and our county. We are here today to recognize her contribution to our county over 45 years as a pillar in the San Diego black community. She's been advocating for young black men and women. She's dedicated her 91 years to fight for opportunities and uplift and empower the future generations. She just recently had a birthday, but it wasn't a day we had a board meeting. So we wanted to bring her here today to recognize her and I think we ought to, maybe we ought to sing you a little happy birthday. Can you all join me? All right, I can't sing, so I need some of you all to really step up. Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Harmon. Happy birthday to you. I was expecting the cha-cha-cha part from all of our kids who are there. I heard you. I got you. Ms. Harmon was born August 2nd, 1931 in Parsons, Kansas. She grew up in Kansas City, Kansas, and moved to San Diego in 1956. She raised her family in southeastern San Diego. As a mother of three children, she enrolled in the School of Social Work at San Diego State while taking 21 units per semester and working 10 hours a day. She still provided for her family. Now that is something to recognize and acknowledge. At the age of 54, she graduated top of her class alongside her daughter and received a double master's degree in May 1978 from San Diego State University School of Social Work. Her professional career included nursing at Mercy Hospital for 20 years, being a social worker, group home counselor at House of Hope for six years. She dedicated 10 years as a social worker for the San Diego County's Welfare Department. She has supported countless families going above and beyond to provide resources for families that didn't have access to, encouraging and strengthening their families. And at a time in our history when our county was not welcoming for people of color, Ms. Harmon founded the San Diego Peace Coalition, a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving families that lost loved ones to violence. She's a lifetime member of the NAACP. She has participated in our political arena, in our civic arena, in our community arena. Throughout her 91 years, her contributions to her community have been strong. Anyone that knows Ms. Harmon knows if you see her at an event and you go up to say hello, she's going to have an ask. And that ask is never going to be about her. It's going to be about some problem she sees in the community and while she has you for a moment, she will, rest assured, before I leave here today, she's going to give me something, some item of homework that we need to do. But there's a persistence there and there's a dedication there that is incredibly admirable, someone who continues to fight. And so, Ms. Harmon, we are here to recognize you, to give you your own day, and to say thank you for everything you've done for our community. Thank you so much for joining us and everything that you've done. Let her go first. Thank you.
I'm going to say all these beautiful things about you too, so is that okay? I was singing those manitas, but I'm really bad, so I'm not going to do it. I'm going to make sure I don't do it for all. But I really, it really is an honor for me to recognize you today along with the chair. I think the Union Tribune last year called you an icon of honor in your 90th birthday, right? Is that what they said? And, but I think what, the thing about Ms. Harmon is that she's been really, I think, guiding the light for so many activists throughout San Diego County, especially, especially women of color. She has gone above and beyond to make sure that so many of us have opportunities to succeed, to be able to have our voice, and to be able to be advocates. You know, Chair Fletcher already mentioned a lot of her achievements, but I want to make sure that I emphasize that her legendary public service as a social worker and all the things that she's done has really uplifted our communities, particularly for communities that have never in the past had a voice. And so it really is an honor for me to stand here before you now in this role to say thank you on behalf of our community and thank you on behalf of all of us women, women of color who have benefited from your fierce voice, your unapologetic ability to say, you know, what all of us have been thinking, but you actually stand up and say it. So I really appreciate you. We love you. We appreciate you. And I thought, why not? This is the time when we need to celebrate you, not because it's your birthday, but because you're pretty fabulous. So thank you so much for everything that you do. And then, do we have to read the, you want to read the? So let's read it because this is a cool part. Be it proclaimed by Chair Fletcher and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, on this 16th date of August 2022, that we commend Kathleen Elizabeth Harmon for her outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the county residents and do hereby declare this day to be Kathleen Elizabeth Harmon Day throughout San Diego County.
Of course you get to say something, Ms. Harmon.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. It's really an honor to stand here today, you know. Would you believe I don't have words to say? I am so excited.
Nobody believes that.
But anyway, my goal is just to uplift this community. I just want justice and peace and freedom for all. And I just fight real hard for our young people. 91 years, I don't stop. I'm just beginning. And my good friend, District Attorney, thank you so much for being here. And I know that you stand behind me. You fight for what I fight for. I just want equal justice for all. Thank you so much.
Come here. Let's take a picture. Our next proclamation will be from Vice Chair Vargas honoring Chula Vista American Little League. And accepting this proclamation will be Nadia Bermudez and all of the Little Leaguers. Come on up.
Oh my gosh, come on up. Come upstairs.
Who's the catcher? You're the catcher.
Hey, 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 they're all great positions. Binganson, 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 come on. How are you? So happy to see you. All right, this is super cool. Give him a big round of applause. I had, I had to write it down because otherwise I'll forget all the great things I want to say about you, but I want to say thank you Chair Fletcher. It's really, really exciting for me today to have you all here today and the 10 new Chula Vista American Little League All-Stars on their incredible spring season and postseason. As many of you know, I love my Padres, but I also love nothing more than our youth baseball teams, the most because they represent our community so well. The coach is very passionate about the work that he's done, right? He's not here today. Where is he? Where's Coach Feria? I know where you are. Come on, Cedric. And, you know, he's been very passionate, very talented, and he's, has this really talented group of people, students, that play out in East Street, J Street Fields in Chula Vista in the heart of District 1. And this summer, they had an amazing run and placed second at the Southwest, Southern California State Tournament earlier this month. They did an amazing job and we're, and we are so proud of you, all of us, because of your accomplishments and how well you represent our community. I also want to recognize the amazing work that the parents do to make sure that their children are there. I know how hard it is. You all are All-Stars, but so are your parents. So let's give your parents a round of applause, yeah? I mean, it's really fun to watch you play baseball, but how much work do they have to do, right? So I want to make sure we thank all of the fans and friends of the District 42 Little League Baseball for their support because without this, without this team, they wouldn't have been successful. The Chula Vista All-Star gave its fans and supporters an incredible postseason and we're looking forward to watching them play this fall. Congratulations to the 10 new Chula Vista American Little League. We hope you continue to represent our community at the highest level and continue inspiring to keep others working and winning off the field. Always remember to represent your community con mucho corazón, right? And more importantly, when all of you become like All-Stars, make sure you invite me, yeah? Saludos? All right. So please join me in honoring this wonderful group of students. And today it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to the 2022 Chula Vista American 10-U All-Star Team members for their outstanding achievement and hereby encourage, continue, and follow and believe their words and inspirations on the baseball field. Keep working and keep winning and you all get this really cool, cool plaque. How about that? Isn't that awesome? Who wants to say something? You guys want to say something? He's going to be the next collection.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you guys all for coming.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm Cedric Feria. I'm the manager of this team. I want to thank Chairman Fletcher, Vice Chair Vargas, for this beautiful award that these young men here have worked very, very hard to achieve. They could not have done it without the support of their parents. It was a daily grind for about seven weeks. Hard work, persistence, and it paid off. They came in second place in a tournament that started in Southern California with over 400 teams. And they did it because of two things. Number one, their hard work. And number two, they are talented. They are a talented group of young boys. Congratulations. You go. Bennett? Yeah, I want the coaches to be there too. Come on.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Thank you. Thank you all. Our next proclamation will be from Supervisors Jim Desmond and Joel Anderson honoring Hannah Bay.
Oh Hannah, oh, I got you kids. Great, great, great. Hey, come on, come on, get closer over here. Get closer over here. Uh-oh. Well, hey, good morning. Supervisor Anderson and myself were very proud to present this proclamation to Hannah Bay. She served as the Executive Director for the San Diego County Farm Bureau. She's been an amazing leader for the Farm Bureau and I had a pleasure of working with her over the past few years on various ranges of issues with the county's Ag Pass Program, reducing time and cost, hopefully helping farmers in processing agricultural permits, and working with the county and plenty more. There's a lot of agriculture in San Diego County. It's about a $2 billion industry and Hannah was at the helm of that. And anytime we had a question or an issue that had anything to do with the farmers in my office, we'd, we'd all turn directly to Hannah and say, okay, how do we work this out? So she's been phenomenal. Throughout her career, she's been the Chair of the San Diego County Farm Bureau Membership Assistance Committee, the Helmut Duzuro Community Planning Group Member, San Diego County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commissioner, and as a Riverside County Flood Control District Commissioner. So she has given a lot of herself, a lot of her time, not only to San Diego County, Riverside County, and to agriculture. But she's also dedicated mother with three wonderful children and she's also the proud owner of her own agricultural business, a baby botanicals and eucalyptus farm. She's also enjoyed serving as the Chair of Quyamaca College Ornamental Horticulture, Advisory Department and Committee. That's a long title, but it's, she's done a lot of things that, and we really are going to miss her at the Farm Bureau for all, all of her input and her insight. So we wish you the best in your future endeavors and I'll now turn it over to Supervisor Joel Anderson to finish us up. Thanks.
You can be the next Vienna White.
I can be the, okay, I'm standing here.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Hannah Bay has been an amazing collaborative partner with my office, with the county. You heard it from Supervisor Desmond. She's the go-to person when it comes to agriculture and I've really enjoyed working with her on, in her role as the, in the Farm Bureau. But Hannah's diverse contribution as an environmentalist and as a charitable community leader are also felt and appreciated through the county of San Diego. On these resolutions, we always like to read the, the last paragraph or so because it summarizes things nicely. Whereas the county of San Diego is committed to recognizing and honoring those individuals that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service and Hannah Bay is one such worthy individual. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by Chairman Fletcher and the Board of Supervisors, on this 16th day of August 2022, that they commend Hannah Bay for her community-focused, environmentally-conscious career and her continued dedication to preserving agriculture and improving the quality of life throughout San Diego for San Diegans. I do hereby declare this day to be Hannah Bay Day throughout San Diego County. Congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond. I just want to take a moment and applaud our Board of Supervisors. They have one of the hardest jobs in the county of San Diego and every day they wake up and work 24 hours a day to help improve the quality of life for our citizens around this county. It has been a joy and an honor to work with all of you and I really appreciate this. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Hannah. All right, great. Hey, okay. Look at how beautiful she is in her floral dress today as the head of the Farm Bureau and her kids are all dressed impeccably as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Our fifth proclamation will be from Our fifth proclamation will be from Supervisor Lawson Reamer honoring Prosecutor's Day. In accepting this proclamation, will be our District Attorney, Summer Steffen.
It is my honor to recognize a key group that serves our community in pursuit of justice. Under the leadership of District Attorney Summer Steffen, San Diego's Deputy District Attorneys play a pivotal role in our community. They have made a career out of seeking fairness, equity, and accountability. And since 1979, the Deputy District Attorneys Association has been working to give these individuals a voice. There are several Deputy District Attorneys that we would like to honor today, including Deputy District Attorney Dan Owens, who helped bring justice to a young girl when two individuals attempted to abduct her in Insinitas, and Deputy District Attorney Leon Shore, who helped win a major case where a charter school defrauded California and our students to the tune of $400 million. These are just two of many, many examples of service demonstrated by San Diego's Deputy District Attorneys. There are just too many accomplishments to mention all of them. But know this: Every single day, our Deputy District Attorneys serve some of our most vulnerable communities. When people try to cheat the system, these Deputy District Attorneys are there to work to make things right. So on behalf of my office and the entire San Diego County Board of Supervisors, I would like to recognize August 16th as Prosecutor's Day in honor of the following individuals: Deputy District Attorney Damon Musler, Deputy District Attorney Dan Owens and Peter Kwan, Deputy District Attorney Flavio Namianoti, Deputy District Attorney Zach Wallace, Deputy District Attorney Miriam Hemming, Deputy District Attorney Leon Shore, Deputy District Attorney Carl Husso, Deputy District Attorney Scott Perolo, Deputy District Attorney Jill Lindberg, Deputy District Attorney Jennifer Reichel, Deputy District Attorney Justin Santiago, Deputy District Attorney Jared Coleman, Deputy District Attorney David Grappilone, and we are joined by District Attorney Summer Steffen and some of the brightest minds in the District Attorney's Office for some remarks. Thank you, Summer.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer, for this great honor today. Thank you, Chair Fletcher, Vice Chair Nora Vargas, and the entire board, and of course, our CEO Helen Robbins Meyer, for this special recognition. I'm Summer Steffen, San Diego County's District Attorney, and I'm joined by Assistant District Attorney Dwayne Woodley, and also the Vice President of the DA's Association, Dan Owens. The president, as you can imagine, is in a multiple-count child molester trial, which many of the DA's that received awards are not here today because they're actually there doing the job. This recognition is so meaningful to all of us, and these prosecutors, who displayed tremendous excellence in the courtroom and outside the courtroom, represent the entire team and the 330 prosecutors who every day seek justice for the most vulnerable. The sampling of cases that they've done represent fighting for our seniors to be safe from scammers. They represent a sexual assault victim that was attacked on her first day of school. They represent the voice of a six-year-old that was molested, and justice was brought to her. A domestic violence victim whose justice was eluded for many years, and after a lot of efforts by cold case, justice was brought. And they represent the largest educational fraud scam in the nation. And even maybe just as important, that $32 million were brought to the county to return to our students K through 12 and to serve them. This is very, very special. We don't look for recognition. Like I said, most of them are not even here. They're in the courtroom fighting the battle. But it does mean a lot, and it is a shot in the arm, and we accept this on behalf of all the victims and communities that we serve. Thank you so much.
Sorry, apologies. I was just notified that there was one more individual on our list that was inadvertently excluded, so I also want to extend the honor to Deputy District Attorney Jessica Cotto.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Lawson Reamer. As our District Attorney said, we are very appreciative that you're recognizing the hard work of all of our prosecutors today.
Come up, come up, come up. You're going to make us get closer to you.
Yeah, thank you. That's a lot of...
You're going to make us squeeze all the...
Thank you to all of our prosecutors. We appreciate you. Good team. Our sixth and final proclamation today will be from Supervisor Desmond honoring the Vista Girls All-Star Softball Team. Accepting this proclamation, give them a round of applause. Accepting this proclamation will be Edward Anderson, Alana McKean, and the entire team. Come on down.
Come on down. Why do I have to stand around here? Get on both sides. All right. Great job.
You don't kind of be nervous.
All right. It's with great honor today to have, to welcome the Vista Girls All-Star softball champions and the coaches. It's great to all have you all down here at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I really want to say thank you and appreciate for all the time you've taken, you took down to drive down this morning from North County. And a thank you to all the parents. I think they're up there. A lot of the parents are here this morning for all the time that they take and they took. I remember when my kids were young, going to the games and taking kids everywhere and trying to figure out what game you had to go to and who's going to do what and where. But I want, just thank you for all your time and support, you know, ensuring that you're All-Stars. They made it to their practices. They made it to their meetings, to their games, to the district games, to the tournaments, and of course, to the championship game as well. The under eight and under Vista Girls softball team, along with their devoted coaches and families, they truly made history with this victory. So I want to say congratulations to you all. And actually, they all signed a baseball for me. I'm going to have this proudly displayed in my office, and each and every year, it's going to go up millions of dollars in value. So this is, this is wonderful. They've all signed this for me, so it's fantastic. But it's my special honor to, it's my special honor to recognize the Vista Eight and Under All-Star Softball Team. I'm winning first place at the Southern California State Championships. And this, the Vista team was actually founded in 1979. That was before some of you were born, right? Yeah, 1979, yeah. And this is the first time in their history that the Vista Girls Eight and Under softball team has won a state championship. And to demonstrate how mighty these girls are and how this great this team is, during the semifinals at the state tournament, they were down four to nothing, four zero, in the bottom of the last inning. And they rallied, and they scored five runs to win and put them at the state championship game. That's a very deserving team. Thanks for your great teamwork. Great job. All right. So therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 16th day of August 2022 that we commend the Vista All-Star Softball Team and congratulate them on their state championship and hereby declaim, proclaim today as Vista Girls Softball State Championship throughout San Diego County. Congratulations, girls. Thank you. Hey, want to hold that? Okay, now we're going to hear from one of the coaches. We're going to hear from, actually, the manager, Mr. Ed Anderson, and then from Alana McKean, one of the players here, about how they scored that winning run. So, Coach, I'll give it to you. Ed.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Supervisor Jim Desmond, and to all the supervisors here and Adrian for this award and recognition. We are very honored for this and can't thank you enough. This is really, really cool. Vista Girls Softball, or BGS, started in 1979, and we are grateful to have had great parents, coaches, and managers before us that have put us in a position to be successful. Doc Baldorama is one of those BGS coaches who's out teaching pitching and hitting lessons just about every day with the BGS girls, and this team and this league wouldn't be where it's at without him. So thank you, Doc. This is a true championship team all across the board, from all the parents, my coaches, and most importantly, the players. Every one of these girls worked hard and improved every day, and every single player had a key play or key moment that contributed to this championship. Thank you again. We'll always remember this summer, and now we'll always remember this day.
I would like to thank the county supervisor, Mr. Jim Desmond, for recognizing our accomplishments this year. Some things that I really liked about softball was being able to be a part of a team and being able to learn new skills throughout the season. What I think made the All-Star team special this year was getting the opportunity to compete with other teams and going to state championships and winning. It was great being together, bonding with my teammates, and being able to achieve something so special together after having team sports shut down for so long. We will remember these memories for the rest of our lives.
Thank you, Ann.
Those remarks were way better than the boys'. Way better.
I wasn't going to say that. I'm glad.
Just like your temperature's, right? Yeah, we need a couple millers. Take a couple millers.
Thank you.
Actually, you can ask me.
Smile.
I never trust government.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for joining us today. Next on the agenda is non-agendized public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters that are within our jurisdiction but items that are not on today's agenda. The only action the board may take is a referral to Chief Administrative Officer. Reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public who are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will be provided additional time to facilitate translation. According to the rules of procedure, we will have five speakers in person and five via phone. The remaining non-agendized public communication speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's agenda item. I'll ask the clerk to call forward up to 10 public speakers.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 18 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, seven individuals in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I would like to invite forward the following individuals. Oliver Twist, Cynthia Chesey, Ginger Faustine, Mike Barello, and Audra. You may come forward in any order.
Good morning, Board. Oliver Twist here. I want to address comments made by Nathan Fletcher during the one-item meeting on July 20th, where the board majority voted to extend teleconferencing under the parameters of AB 361. Aside from the tone and condescension of his snide comment at the end of the meeting, it was also blatant misinformation. You see, on November 10th, this board held an emergency meeting on the premise of implementing rules changes primarily targeting conduct by the public to rain and hate speech and, quote, disruptive behavior. However, one rule in particular was nestled within the numerous rules changes adopted that day and went undetected by many, myself included. It was Rule 4C, which states in part, "In addition to allowing public comment in person, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors shall provide the ability for members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors remotely via a telephonic or other internet-based service option at regular meetings." So that vote on July 20th had nothing to do with whether the public was allowed to offer comment remotely, as that is already allowed under Rule 4C. The vote applies to relaxing the standards for you, the members of the governing body. At this point, I now ask a couple of things. First, a public apology, not for misspeaking, but for how you treated the public during that meeting. Getting frustrated with the public surely comes with the territory of the job you ran for. Curbing your tongue and leaving those frustrations as thought bubbles only instead of spoken public record is but one litmus test that delineates a politician from a statesman. Secondly, I'm asking you for future votes on this item that you would add the words under AB 361 to the agenda wording to make it crystal clear to everyone that the vote is to allow teleconferencing under relaxed standards that makes the job easier for you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ginger Fassino, and I've been a union representative for the California Nurses Association for close to 14 years. I've been representing the nurses at Palomar Health, actually specifically for four years. I'm a San Diego native who moved back as an adult and was raised by nurses and healthcare workers. The California Nurses Association has represented nurses at Palomar Health for 20 years, and our sister union, CheU, has been representing the healthcare workers there for also close to 20 years. Like you all, we recognize the dire need to come up with solutions to address our county's mental health crisis, and I assist the nurses and caregivers internally at their facilities when they do advocate for solutions. Unfortunately, although the nurses and caregivers have been advocating for more mental health services as opposed to less, recently, the CEO, Diane Hanson, at Palomar Health, unilaterally made the We were given formal notification beginning of this month about the intent to close the GPU by the end of October of this year. Our concern was that this big decision was made, but there was no public discussions on this matter, and this decision would affect the greater community. We're concerned that there wasn't a lot of transparency during the decision-making process. We also note that the elected Board of Directors, who's supposed to have a governing role regarding hospital matters, did not weigh on this decision. We believe that the community should have had an opportunity to be consulted and been part of the discussion. GPU exists as its own separate unit for a reason, and we believe we have to put patients over profits. We ask that you all to meet with us in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Chesey. I've been an RN at Palomar Health on the geropsychiatric unit for one and a half years and an RN for 25 years, and I'm here just to speak about the closure of the GPU, which is a dedicated acute care geropsych unit in North County at Palomar Health Poway. We were made aware that the unit was closing via email, and no discussion was made with us as the nurses or the caregivers, and as far as I'm aware, the decision was made unilaterally to close the unit by the CEO of Palomar Health without much discussion or public hearings, and I'm not sure if the Board of Directors of Palomar Health were even involved in the closure or the discussion to close the unit. So I'm just here as one of the nurses to, as I'm concerned because this is one of the last geropsych units that is dedicated in North County to caring for the elderly, especially the moderate to severe dementia care patients and those that have severe mental illness. So I don't really want to see that them co-mingled with the adult population. I think that's a bad idea. So I just am advocating for the geropsych unit to stay open, and hopefully that San Diego County can get involved because it's a much-needed service in North County and also in San Diego County. So they're going to open another hospital in two or three years, and in the interim, I would like to see some kind of transition plan to maybe keep it open or some plan to help these people because it's a pretty desperate situation. They don't have, we don't have a lot of open beds for them.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name's Mike Barello. I'm here today to talk about water. In particular, rewind earlier this year. Parents in Carlsbad, California met with the Carlsbad Unified School District to discuss Hope Elementary School. What happened last year is somebody cross-connected the wastewater line, the reclaimed wastewater line, into the school's drinking supply. For nine months, these kids were drinking contaminated water. Some of the kids got very sick, and it was just an awful thing that happened to the community. But the thing I want to bring to the council's attention and also Health and Human Services, I was out running last week, just past Hope School up the hill on Tamarack, and running along, and I noticed the sprinklers on the side of the road here came on, and aerosol droplets going in my face. This reclaimed water, sprayheads are putting out reclaimed water, and the public can breathe this in. So I did some research on it, and I found out there have been some studies, but not very extensive. Mouse studies where the mice have developed cancer. Other studies for the workers that work on this, the person that was doing the repairs that day was not wearing a respirator for aerosols, although some of the literature that I've seen, they do recommend that they wear breathing protection because they work on it, you know, eight hours a day. This is a health hazard. I believe it's a health hazard, but it's been overlooked by Health and Human Services. It needs to be looked into. Because I'm going to write it up, and I'll submit it to your HHS, what I found. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Use the name Audra. You guys are poisoning the water, so you're not going to do anything about that. Anyway, so I'm just curious. I thought we were in a state of an emergency for monkeypox. Wear your mask. You were wearing them before. Is it just sometimes it shows up? Anyway, hi, Anthony. I just wanted to say, your office got some election fraud evidence. Have you taken a look at that? Probably not, because we took it to your office and they refused to take it. So we had to take it to Encinita Sheriff's Station, and they are putting it on a detective's desk. And also Summer Stephens, I'm bummed she's gone, but her office also got evidence that there has been fraud with the elections, which is something, Nathan, you said doesn't happen. But you know what is so funny? Alex Padilla actually put out a letter or statement saying that the machines are not certified, but we're still going to use them anyway. And you can go to the Secretary of State's website, and on the bottom it says, "They haven't been certified." Therefore, you're using machines that are not valid. They actually have a trapdoor in them. They can be taken over, and they will flip the votes. They can manufacture votes, and they can do a whole lot of stuff. They get hooked to the internet. And the fact that you guys will do nothing about it makes you complicit. So I'm asking people, because we're all doing this across the state and the nation, to go and file a grand jury complaint. If you were at a poll and you realized there was something fishy going on, like, I don't know, internet connection, whatever it is, but these machines have got to go. We're not going to be using them in November, Nathan. So maybe you're not going to be there because you can't cheat to get in anymore. Okay? And you're complicit because you're doing nothing about it, and that is your guys' job. The evidence is there. Do your frickin' job.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Or remind the callers that they should meet their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Again, we'll hear from the first five callers.
Hi, so I didn't get a chance to speak at the previous meeting, but I just want to thank the board for addressing monkeypox, declaring a state of emergency. I think it's very important that everyone protects themselves from monkeypox, just like protecting themselves from COVID. I just wanted to mention, I think going forward, we should ignore anyone who unironically plays the Oompa Loompa song in their comments. That's just my thoughts. Also, I just want to address some things that were just said. First off, Oliver Twist, you're tone policing Nathan Fletcher over a comment, a totally accurate comment, by the way, that he made at the end of the meeting, not the monkeypox meeting, but the meeting to extend teleconferencing. He was pointing out the irony in a bunch of people using teleconferencing who denounced teleconferencing. If he's not allowed to call you idiots, which by the way, he didn't even do that, but I kind of wish he did, to be completely honest, because that's what you people are. If you don't see the irony, then I don't know what to say. And then Audra, oh God, here we go with, you know, I was going to wait, I'm going to speak on item 11 more on this, but voter fraud doesn't exist. It is a myth perpetuated by Republican lawmakers so that they can do voter suppression, which does exist. And Nathan Fletcher rigging the vote? Why would he have to do that? His district is like two to one Democrat. It's a deep blue district, and he beat that Dingbat Amy record by like 40 points in a three-way race. So come on, are we really going to go through this? Are we really going to go through the circus again?
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a San Diego County resident and attendee of the Fallbrook Planning Group. I firmly believe the marijuana ordinance moving forward will negatively impact our rural communities in a significant way. I'm not alone in my opinion, as many Fallbrook community members spoke out last night at the planning group meeting. They understand the negative consequences of legalization and normalization of high potency THC marijuana products. In last week's edition of Newsweek, an article was published titled, "Marijuana Legalization Bill Falls Flat," a long-awaited bill that would legalize and commercialize marijuana nationwide, called the Cannabis Administration and Opportunity Act. The article describes how our Democratic Senate leaders are realizing marijuana's detrimental consequences. The article states the bill was met with fierce resistance from opponents concerned about the growing influence of big marijuana and the inevitable public health consequences. Some of those public health consequences include increased potency, link to addiction, excuse me, and mental health issues, marijuana-related accidents, and decreased productivity in the workplace, all issues that our backcountry communities do not need to see exacerbated. Supervisors, you are all aware of the public health crisis San Diego is facing. Addiction, mental health, and decreased productivity are only a few of the challenges. I urge you to reconsider this ordinance and not let big marijuana fill the footsteps of big tobacco, as other government officials are beginning to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to hear from the next caller. For the next caller, Diane Grace, your device might be muted. Again, for the next caller, your device might be muted. We'll come back to you. For the next caller, Peggy Walker, please go ahead. We'll come back to that caller.
This is true, thank you very much. I hate kid cream puff worms, but I love Willy Wonka. Since abortion is going to be a topic today, here's some info I found out. In the May 10th meeting, I talked about how in 2008 in New York City, there was a group called the Abortion Doula Project who wanted to execute free abortions without medical professionals in their way. They sold abortion to the ignorant public by re-advertising their abortion doulas as full-spectrum doulas. Well, it turns out, I was right on the money with my research, because in the May 18th, 2021 AM meeting, Nathan said, quote, "I want to commend our community advocates like Planned Parenthood, the efforts we're doing around a doula pilot program," end quote. Doulas seem to be the runaround towards abortion. Now from the June 28th meeting, I absolutely have to second Oliver Twist's motion of a giant clock in the chamber, as well as her framework for our freedom, protocols for increasing transparency and accountability proposal. I would like to add to this proposal, a new code of conflict of interest framework that I suggest be written by Audra in the future, as she is an expert at revealing those who maintain conflicts of interest. Perhaps we, the people, can fix the corruption going on in this chamber by working together on new frameworks that counteract the multiple radical frameworks that have been passed by these supervisors so far. Lastly, here's a great clip from the August 31st, 2021 meeting starring Nathan.
Or do a rally outside, just because the reality is, I care about everyone's life in San Diego County. Everyone is, whether I agree or disagree vehemently with everything, I care about you and your family.
Hey, Nathan, you even mentioned rallies in front of the building. Does that mean you actually care about Audra too? Did you have a crush on her and get rejected? Ah, that's all right, Nathan. Everybody's got a crush on her. Get in line again. Just be a guy, though, and she's trouble.
Thank you. I want to hear from the next caller. We'll go back to the two previous callers. Again, next caller, Diane Grace, your device might be muted.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Diane Grace, and I am here today as a mother, grandmother, and neighbor, because I hope that the county's tobacco retail licensing program will lead to less smoking in public, where secondhand smoking compromises the health of us all. I see from the board letter for item 3 that the TRL program will support, quote, "Support the county's vision of a just, sustainable, and resilient future for all, specifically those communities and populations in San Diego County that have been historically left behind, as well as our ongoing commitment to the regional live-well San Diego vision of health, safe, and thriving communities," end of quote. I support that, but I hope that the Board of Supervisors realizes that we live in close quarters, and it is now marijuana smoke that our neighbors are experiencing where we live and in public places. I have researched marijuana allergy, and it is estimated that 10% of the population has a strong allergic reaction to marijuana smell, which is more than an annoyance. It is a painful health hazard. For countless others like my family, it is a very uncomfortable nuisance. Please remember that good health is precious, and the county should only involve themselves in those business activities that will enhance good health, not marijuana businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the last caller. Next caller, Peggy Walker, please go ahead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Diane Grace, and I am here today as a mother, grandmother, and neighbor, because I hope that the county's tobacco retail licensing program will lead to less smoking in public, where secondhand smoking compromises the health of us all. I see from the board letter for item 3 that the TRL program will support, quote, "Support the county's vision of a just, sustainable, and resilient future for all, specifically those communities and populations in San Diego County that have been historically left behind, as well as our ongoing commitment to the regional live-well San Diego vision of health, safe, and thriving communities," end of quote. I support that, but I hope that the Board of Supervisors realizes that we live in close quarters, and it is now marijuana smoke that our neighbors are experiencing where we live and in public places. I have researched marijuana allergy, and it is estimated that 10% of the population has a strong allergic reaction to marijuana smell, which is more than an annoyance. It is a painful health hazard. For countless others like my family, it is a very uncomfortable nuisance. Please remember that good health is precious, and the county should only involve themselves in those business activities that will enhance good health, not marijuana businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the last caller. Next caller, Peggy Walker, please go ahead. Peggy Walker, please go ahead. We'll come back to that caller. We'll hear from the final caller this morning.
My name is Catherine Lippett. I've attended county community planning groups over the last year, and I have shared their concerns, their concerns for the harmful policies that the county has created that will impoverish their lives, their health, their quality of life, and the rural communities that they loved, while removing their ability to have any say in the oversight of such projects, specifically the commercial marijuana businesses that have unique privileges that were never granted to previous industries that wanted to locate in their areas. The board claims to care about the environment, water resources, et cetera, and yet these policies will do nothing to improve the environment. Like the big tobacco, they will also destroy the environment. They are for-profit industries, and they don't care about the public's health. They will do whatever they can to profit, and the county has indicated that they will support them in those efforts. It's an anathema to residents that are expectant that the county Board of Supervisors is there to serve them. You are not there to serve private for-profit industries like marijuana, and it's frustrating to see this continue, and it would be time for you to turn this around. Do you really think that impoverished communities are going to care about the environment? When you make them poor, they will do whatever they can to try and survive. It is people who are economically well-off or middle-income people that have the luxury of caring about their environment. of caring about their environment, so please consider that in your future policies.
Thank you. For the remaining callers that requested to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda, please hang up and call back at the conclusion of the session. Chair Fletcher, that concludes the request for non-adjourned public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Next on our agenda is approval of the statement of proceedings. Minutes, for the regular Board of Supervisors meeting of July 20th, '22, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Vargas. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
We'll now proceed with the formation of the consent calendar. Members of the public will be able to comment on the remaining items on consent after supervisors have had the opportunity to poll any items or make any comments that they wish. We'll begin with Supervisor Anderson.
I was trying to kind of like, oh. I'll talk. Mr. Chair, item number two, I had a friendly amendment to it. I don't know if we can handle it here or not, but if we can, I'm happy to do it.
Mike?
I suggested, see, that October, what have my colleagues asked that we make it county-wide on this? I'm just asking for a friendly amendment that we make it county-wide. I believe moving this forward would help everybody with their homeless issue. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Let me ask Council if we're okay to expand it county-wide and leave it on consent, or if we need to pull it.
If it's that minor amendment, if we can just put that into the record.
Okay.
Perfect.
This is my amendment, and basically you wanted to start a pilot, was what we did, and then expand it.
All right, let's pull it. We're going to pull it. We'll come back on discussion.
Did the public, did the public pull any?
The public can't pull.
On consent?
No.
Oh, to speak on it, okay.
There's people here to speak on consent.
Okay.
But if we're going to have an extended discussion around it, it's just more appropriate to take it.
Sure, absolutely. I was just trying to move forward. I'm a little out of practice. Item eight, nine, if we could bifurcate that vote, I'm good to go with it, and then, and then I just had two quick questions on item 16, and I don't want to pull it, if I could just get the answers. So, we're doing $5,000 for new civil engineers for recruitment, but I didn't see anything in this motion for retention, and I didn't know if we had retention coming or how we were doing that. Maybe I should just pull this one, too.
Sure.
Okay, I'll just pull it, and then we can...
Which number?
It was item 16.
Oh, yeah, we were going to pull that one. Okay.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Yes. Mike on? Okay, great. Yeah, I have nothing to pull, but I have a number of comments on different items. So, just to clarify, we've already pulled 16, as well as two. Okay, great, so I won't make those comments on those items now. So, I just want to make a couple of comments just first on eight and nine. You know, I think item eight is something I'm very proud to bring forward today with my colleague, Vice Chair Vargas. It is really appalling, frankly, that we can enter things into Google, or into Facebook, and Messenger, and into places where you really think and assume and hope that your data is private, with really private questions about your health, you know, looking for doctors, or, you know, questions about your sexual reproductive well-being, and then that can then be bought and sold to the highest bidder, can be given to the government. You know, I think there's just, to me, just such a clear violation of our privacy rights. So, really, I'm happy that we could bring forward this resolution to support the efforts of our colleagues in Congress to protect our rights to privacy with this My Body, My Data bill, and I'm hoping that I can count on the support of my colleagues today to support this, to support this item. This builds on the work that Supervisor Vargas and I began last May, I think it was, when we asked the board to adopt a resolution to support efforts to amend the California Constitution to enshrine the right to choose here in the state of California, and really continuing that fight, because it's just such an important fight for women across our country and across our community. I think it's item nine is the legislative housing bill. You know, I just want to take a moment to speak about housing. I think we all have spoken many, many times about housing here at the board. It's clearly an issue that matters so much to our communities. We do know that we're only on pace to build about 12% of the 100,000 affordable houses needed in our region by 2029. You know, just to reiterate that, that really means that by the end of this decade, seven out of eight of the affordable homes that we need are actually not going to have been built. You know, I think we all know this is having a huge impact on working families, being pressed other communities, people across our region, I think in all of our districts. So, just continuing the work that we've already been doing in the local level, beginning to bring that advocacy to Sacramento, to empower us as a region to do everything we can to build affordable housing in San Diego County. So, again, hoping that I can count on the support of my colleagues for that item as well. Then I just want to say briefly on item 12, I just want to thank the CIO and thank Luz for bringing this forward. I think what we've talked about for the last year and a half is, you know, really changing how this county operates from top to bottom to center some really important values around equity, around sustainability, and I think that this sustainability impact statement is going to go a long way to do that. I really appreciate the leadership in bringing that forward. It's important that we think about sustainability in everything that we do and in all of our board items, and I think this impact statement will, building, I think, on the leadership of Vice Chair Vargas with the equity impact statement, begin to bring that same lens around sustainability. So, thank you for your leadership in bringing this forward, but also thank you to Vice Chair Vargas for, I think, pioneering this approach with equity, and we're able to build on that, and I think some of the successes that we've seen. I just had a quick question, and I'm 13, and definitely do not think this needs to be pulled, although Chair Fletcher, please, you know, feel free to pull it if you want, but it's just really a simple question, not an objection whatsoever, but I just wanted to be on the record with a better understanding of the justification for the sole source, the request for sole source procurement.
Thanks, Supervisor. I'm going to have Marco, who authored the board letter and is in charge of the plan.
Good morning, Supervisor. Thanks for the question. I work with my colleague from Department of Purchasing and Contracting to make a determination that this would be the best short-term answer to meet an existing need for charging extension. To put two filters on it, one is that the existing aftermarket study, the existing market is not mature in chargers and doesn't offer us multiple options that could be, could meet our operational needs. ChargePoint has a network of 2,400 chargers. Relative to that, the next largest charger available only provides 35.
Wow.
And Tesla also offers it, but they're not physically compatible, so the second filter was compatibility, both physical compatibility in the Tesla example, and then also in software and financial system compatibility. So, CPI, ChargePoint offers compatibility with AssetWorks, which is our fleet management system, so we can bill to the department and the car. The other systems don't have that maturity yet, but we hope to establish that over the next two years as the market matures.
That's really helpful. So, would it be correct to say that ChargePoint is really the only entity that offers both compatibility and a really significant depth of range of ChargePoint stations, and that there would be a significant risk that anything other than a sole source could end up with a provider that has a significantly lower quality service?
Yes, and not the availability.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Those are all my questions and comments.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
You're welcome. So, I understand two has been pulled, and eight and nine were going to vote, have been pulled. So, they're going to be voted on separately from the consent calendar. Okay. Then that's all I have, all right?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vargas.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. First, on item number three, I don't have anything to pull, I just want to make a couple of comments, but on item number three, I want to thank our county staff for the thorough evaluation of the plan that was presented for all of us on this ordinance, specifically the work that is going to be done to monitor the H requirement. That's very important, so I really appreciate that. The tobacco retail licensing program is crucial to helping us improve the health and quality of life of all San Diegans, most importantly, helping us prevent nicotine addiction at a young age. So, I really appreciate all the work around this, and I did want to say this also. On item number eight, I just want to say thank you to Supervisor Lawson Reamer for the opportunity to partner with this on this proposed resolution, and acknowledge Congresswoman Jacobs for her introduction of the My Body, My Data bill and her leadership and vision on this effort. I think everybody knows that I've been in this fight for reproductive justice for over three decades, and this is really a moment where all hands, as they say, hands-on deck have to be a priority, and so what this has done is really has an opportunity for us, and even though in San Diego County, our rights to reproductive health care, including abortion, are protected, in the rest of the country, our reproductive rights have been stripped away, and so it's very important that we continue this fight. I think that this means thinking strategically about protecting these rights, because what is next is really the criminalization of people seeking reproductive health care, and we have seen it across the country already, and so whatever we can do to make sure that we support our communities, I think everybody knows that within passing of SB 78, passing in Texas, a 26-year-old woman was arrested and charged with her murder after self-managing her abortion. The web searches we conduct, emails we send, websites we visit, and information we put into our apps can all be weaponized against us, and that is not what should be happening in the United States. A person's reproductive health and sexual health data is the most private and personal information, and it's unthinkable to me that this information you send through application that used to simply monitor your period could be really used against you. So, I want to say again, thank you to Congresswoman Jacobs, who understands how the attacks of our reproductive rights intersect with our digital lives, and she's doing something about it. So, I'm excited to support this and to work together with Supervisor Lawson Reamer as we're moving on our advocacy for reproductive health together. So, I am happy to support this as well. And then on item number 12, policy number 72, I want to say thank you to our county staff for integrating the sustainability impact statement as part of every one of our board letters. I know it takes a lot, so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the guidelines and questions provided to staff that will assist them in developing their sustainability statements when they come to the board, so I'm really looking forward to be able to consider the data and resources being leveraged in all of the work that we're doing. And last but not least, on item number 14, work is, thank you also for bringing this item forward. I appreciate the thoroughness of our Park and Rec team has done to move forward this agreement that has been in the works since 1978. Yeah, I know, and so this is item that is considering a deal between the county and the city of National City, and it's successful with the sale. This was hopefully generate funding for park improvements that supports Sweetwater Regional Park and the surrounding area. So, again, thank you to county staff for their diligent work. Thank you, Nathan Fletcher, and with Adam. Happy to make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. On item three, I'm pleased to see this moving forward. This is something Supervisor Diane Jacob and I started some time ago, and it's good to see it being implemented, our tobacco retail licensing program, and so really pleased to see the continued efforts and work that's going into that. On item six, this is where we're setting a future hearing date for the county to acquire the Volunteers of America Southwest site in National City. They were a contractor with the county providing behavioral health services in 2018. Our county staff conducted an audit and discovered some pretty significant discrepancies and fraud that was taking place. In an effort to reclaim the funds that were misused, our best and only available option or recourse was to accept and have them turn over this building and facility to the county so that we can begin to provide services to people who need them most, and this is a unique opportunity for the county to acquire this facility, to do some renovations, and to get it back in service, helping individuals, and so we're making lemonade out of lemons here, but it is good to see us moving forward and look forward to us as quickly as possible expediting this building and getting those services back online. On item seven, these are two funding opportunities that will also help us in our behavioral health continuum, a better way to deliver behavioral health. The first funding opportunity allows us to build out our Edgemore Hospital. This helps individuals with complex medical needs, including behavioral health services, and we have to continue to invest in our workers, and we have to continue to invest in the workplace, and this infrastructure enhancements will help us better serve our community and better meet the need, and I also appreciate the funding that's in here around mental health programs and prevention programs in our schools. We think this is an important component that will move forward. On item eight, since the Supreme Court overturned Roe versus Wade in June, many states have upped their assault on women's reproductive health and freedom. As has been mentioned, some going as far as to prosecute women for their reproductive health choices using web searches and messages that they had privately sent as evidence for criminalization. The action today is about keeping your data private and ensuring that it cannot be used, and I want to applaud Member of Congress Sarah Jacobs for HR 8111, My Body, My Data. This would restrict the collection and disclosure of personal health care data. All we're doing here is supporting an action to say that your data and your communications are yours, and this information should not be utilized or weaponized against them, and I appreciate our local Member of Congress, and greatly appreciate Supervisor Nora Vargas and Lawson Reamer for their leadership on these efforts and actions that they're taking here. With that, I will second the motion. Before we go to public commenters, just so we're clear, we have polled items two and item 16. After we can finish with consent, we will take item 16 first. After item 16, we will take item 23, the two are related, and then we will do the remainder of the agenda items in sequential order. We also will take a bifurcated vote on items eight and nine and consent, and then everything else that's on consent. So, with that, we have a motion and...
Chair, I didn't know, I have a comment on item nine. I didn't know if you wanted to do it now, or you want to do it when we take the vote.
No, now's the time.
Now's the time, all right. All right. Well, I want to say, on item nine, thank you to my colleague Supervisor Lawson Reamer for bringing this forward, looking ways for ways to provide more affordable housing in the housing crisis that we have here in San Diego County, and I agree, we're in a crisis, and I've always been a huge proponent for more housing. However, I think we disagree on the means on how to get there, and so I don't think the answer should be adding another taxing layer of government. I think we have plenty of that already at this point in time, and I don't think now's the time, you know, to putting more fees and taxes on individuals or on housing. The Housing Finance Agency, this part of this request, could create, could create up to six new taxes on San Diegans, including a parcel tax, a business license tax, a special business tax, a special tax on vacant property, a special tax on real property, and a commercial linkage fees, and I think if we're going to be putting more taxes on properties, that would make housing less affordable and not more affordable. So, I don't think now's the time to be increasing housing costs, and again, I'm all in favor of more housing, particular affordable housing. When I was mayor of San Marcos, 10% of our housing stock, when I was mayor in San Marcos, was feed-restricted affordable housing, and I also want to thank Nora for putting Ginger Hitzke on our planning commission. She's an affordable housing developer, and so I'm really glad to see that, so I'm all in favor of getting more affordable housing, more housing of all types here in San Diego County, but I think we should be getting out of the way of home builders. They're the ones who actually build the homes. We should be getting out of their way, getting government out of their way, less fees, less restrictions, and allowing them to build more housing instead of adding another layer of government. So, I appreciate the motive and the ends and the means, and I think we agree on the goal, it's just probably how we get there, and so I'm not going to be supporting item nine, but thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Let me ask the court to call for our public speakers on consent.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 24 total requests to speak on items on the consent calendar, seven in person, and 17 requesting to speak by phone. As the chair indicated, as a reminder, items two and 16 were pulled from the consent calendar for discussion, so any members of the public that requested to speak on those items, please hold your comments until the board discusses those items, as we'll receive public comment on those items separately. Any members of the public that requested to speak on the remaining items on the consent calendar, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. We'll begin with the speakers in favor. I'd like to invite Roberto Velazquez, Lana Cotton, and Crystal Irving.
I think it's important for the audience to know that we broadcast this all throughout the building, so if you go to the men's room or the ladies' room, you can't get away from what people are saying, so it's important that people know we're always listening. So it's important that people know we're always listening. Thank you.
You may come forward in any order, and I'll ask you to please identify which item on consent you're speaking on. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Roberto Velazquez, and I'm the president and CEO of Southern Caregiver Resource Center. And I'm here talking about item 10, the consent for funding for CE funds for our organization. You know, Southern Caregiver Resource Center is celebrating 35 years of providing caregiver support for families. And one of the things that we've had to do over the years is do a lot of awareness campaigns. People don't realize that they're caregivers, they're family caregivers, and yet they're suffering providing care 24 hours a day for very complex, frail conditions at home. So we, we provide those support services that help those families better manage their care, feel more competent as caregivers and even give them a break through respite services. One of the things that we're doing this year is we're kicking off our 35th anniversary, actually on Friday, for with our Sounds of Summer Benefit Concert over at Morgan Run over in Rancho Santa Fe. And I invite all of you, I believe you all have received invitations to attend. But also, in addition to that, we're doing a wellness and mental health campaign. And I appreciate Supervisor Lawson Reamer's proposal to request some funding for, in support of our campaign. And I hope that you will all join in and help support Southern Caregiver Resource Center and all the great work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Crystal Irving, President of SCIU Local 221. These will be short and sweet because I'll be coming before you a couple of times today. But I just wish to offer my support for item eight, the resolution in support of My Body My Data Act, protecting the privacy data and safety of people seeking reproductive health care. This is critical in this digital age. And so I would just like to thank you all for rising to the occasion and protecting our data. I also wish to support item nine, supporting legislative efforts to address the housing crisis, which of course impacts many of our members. And I'm proud to live and work in a county where we're addressing housing head on and creating strategies and implementing plans to ensure that we are building the housing that we need here in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the speakers in opposition in person, Oliver Twist, Audra, Mark and Paul Henken.
I don't see the timer reset here. There you go, thanks. Lana Cotton, number 11. The American people have lost confidence in the election process and results. They are concerned and now demand election integrity at all levels. They are awake and will be carefully watching in the upcoming elections. So here is a pre-election checklist. These are all required by law or the election cannot be certified. Qualified equipment and process certification, election policies and procedures compliant with state and federal laws, certified accuracy tests on the machines with actual ballots that meet and help America Vote Act requirements, qualified federal information security modernization act mandated risk assessment, policies, procedure, logs, control documents and operation security rules adequately secure the election process, including all paper records, voter registration lists up to date and accurate, voter registration processes legal and conducted by state officials, auditable items identified and being preserved, 24/7 protection around auditable items until all, after all challenges are resolved, physical and purchasing controls in place and documented. Hopefully, these safeguards were all followed in our recent primary. Better still, we, the people, need to vote Amish. That means all paper, no machines, in person, with photo ID, single day elections and hand counted ballots. Then voter integrity will be returned and the American people can be confident that their votes truly count. France does it, we can too.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Paul Henken. Most of these items have serious problems. High frequency communications equipment stuff. High frequency is medically horrible, damages ears, causes vibrations, which damage structures, body parts, organs and so on. And probably it will increase the number of hearing aids sold, extra cost. Why is this necessary, especially in view of the potential harm? Statement of necessity should be in the first paragraph of the agenda. And while high frequency interfere with regular frequency communications, then the HIV services, why does the LGBTQ community need these services more than anyone else? Item G on the agenda list even is designed for people of color. Mental health, early intervention services, substance use treatment, focus services for persons of color, food bank, home delivered meals, transportation, rental subsidy, emergency housing assistance, emergency financial assistance. Why does the LGBT community need these more than anyone else? Let's see, what else did I have? It is great if all of the money for older adult services goes for a good cause, but why do we need more if this resolution authorizes acceptance of $3.9 million of additional revenue from CDA through, for July 1 through 2024?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Oliver Twist here. First, I wanted to say, again, you were, Chair Fletcher, a little overzealous on the gavel when we could not hear Joel Anderson's microphone. We were simply, we gave it a few seconds to resolve itself. And when it did not, we simply spoke up to try to alert you of the problem. So instead of the gavel, maybe you could come up with a procedure for us to do that because we were disenfranchised not being able to hear the meeting. Item six, Volunteers of America Southwest. This is an outrage. They fettered $277,000 of our money, not to mention up to the million that's going to cost to renovate the building. The board needs to expend more money on auditors and oversight and less on other pet programs. Item nine, legislative efforts to address housing crisis. Please no more bureaucratic government agencies, particularly with the ability to levy taxes. The boondoggle from item six that I just touched on is a case study in how the government does not operate on a premise of stewardship to carefully manage our tax dollars. Item eight, My Body My Data. I'm not surprised the board is putting forth this essentially toothless resolution. However, since you are, I'm here today to ask for equity, a value you claim to hold so dear. It was discovered a few months ago via FOIA documents that the CDC purchased cellphone data from a data broker, Safe Graph, with the intent to track people's movements during COVID. I'm asking you now to please issue a similar, similar resolution to protect our data that was tracked during COVID. My goodness, if the government chose to track the Navajo Nation, I'm not sure what they would try to do to this poor old church lady. And while I'm not a conspiracy theorist, I do think in hindsight that I was very prudent to leave my cellphone behind every Sunday morning when I went to get my essential liquor and Lotto ticket at 10:00 AM sharp every week. Lastly, bring back clapping, the happy cacophony of democracy. Your rules are subjective and do not align with the First Amendment. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
He's the name, Audra. Nothing they do actually goes in line with the Constitution, huh, Anthony? Okay. Yeah, high frequency communications. What kind of radiation is that going to cause? Who knows? Tobacco, yeah, you guys are like, let's not ban it because then we can't make money off of it. But we'll say we want to go to zero, so we're just going to tax the people and all this stuff. And then HIV and AIDS. I love that you guys are doing something with that because you're giving it to people with these injections. So it should be called AIDS, like vaccine induced, yeah. And then we also have, yeah, number six, you're reclaiming property because of fraud. So does that mean the people get to come and reclaim all the property that you fraudulently taken from the people? Probably not. And then the pandemic exacerbated deteriorating mental health. It wasn't the pandemic, it's you guys. Yeah, My Body My Data, that is so great because you, you know, don't use our data for other things. But I was just wondering, like, if I identify as someone's mother, can I take them across state lines and murder them? And you guys will pay for it? I don't know. Is that not the way it works? Do I actually have to be their parent, I guess? I don't know. But I mean, I guess people want to do it up until 18. You can just go take them to the abortion clinic and put them to sleep. It's great because I mean, they're not going to be productive in society. We got to take care of them. And a housing crisis. It's funny because you don't do anything to help the housing crisis. You get all this money and you basically tell people to move down the street. But I find that if you don't have kids, you actually don't get help. And declaring the election results, there's foreign interference. You guys need to do something about that. And yeah, there's a whole lot of stuff in here. But you want to procure electronic vehicle charging services? How are you going to pay for that? How's the grid going to?
Next speaker, please.
Mark, six seconds apiece is a joke. I mean, literally a joke. You could even stand up there and pretend like we have a say is ludicrous and a crime. So let's see, high frequency communications program. I just happened to be writing this today while I was making notes on your topics. This is Beatrice Golem from UCSD. She is a president, head of research at UCSD, not somebody you used to be. And she wrote a letter to California about the dangers of high frequencies. Everyone should look it up. Beatrice and Golem is G-O-L-O-M-B. Put in 5G radiation letter to state or something, Beatrice Golem, it'll come up. Student mental health services, yeah, that would sound like a good idea, except you guys never help anything, of course. It's a business model to make money. And there was just an article in the paper in the last couple of days about how a woman's site went viral because basically she went in to see people about mental health and left feeling much, much worse. No one spoke to her. She was just made to wait and isolated for 30 hours or something. It was very stressful for her. And I'm sure you're just going to drug our kids after some minor pharmaceutical interview with them. It's, that's a crime too, and a business model. Housing, I've talked about it at least three times now. You're spending over a million dollars on these apartments. It takes special contractors. The people are subsidizing all of it off into infinity, and it's making people a lot of money and not helping. And we're helping very little. And basically, it's going to be too much of a stress on society, ultimately bankrupting us, which is the goal, and transferring the money to your friends. Sustainable impact, well, electric vehicle charging, that's a good example. Michael Moore's movie Plan of the Humans stated that it's actually economic. We use more gas making.
Thank you. Your time is up. Now we'll hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd remind the callers that they should meet their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll begin with our first caller.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Anne Skelly. I'm a mother of three adult sons, speaking today in support of the county tobacco retail licensing program. Our family appreciates county dedication to reducing the sale of tobacco products to minors and limiting the initiation of tobacco use among all ages. And as the board letter says, ending the commercial tobacco epidemic. Smoking and vaping behaviors affect everyone who is exposed and poor health costs money and public health and medical resources. It matters what the county adopts as policies and what businesses the county enables. So I ask, as a mother of adult sons, I wonder, should the county be enabling marijuana businesses whose products are also smoked and vaped? Because smoking and vaping marijuana and tobacco affects everyone who is exposed and poor health costs money and public health and medical resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Lon, and I'm an organizer with Asian Society Collective. I'm calling in appreciation of Vice Chair Nora Vargas and Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer for bringing forward this proposed resolution to support the My Body My Data Act. As a grassroots organization, we are in support of protecting the privacy and safety of our most impacted communities that seek reproductive health care. Federal legislation is imperative in protecting extremely private information and misuse of data that harms our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, Kevin Stevenson. So I'm addressing items eight and 11. And for both of these items, it is important to distinguish the yes versus the no. And in regards to item eight, I'm going to use the same principle in the November election when Prop 1 is on the ballot. Everyone who says yes to the My Body My Data Act recognizes that a women, that all women have right to what to do with their own bodies. And they don't want their data being sold. They don't want Facebook selling their data and busting people who live in, let's say, red states where abortion is illegal and ratting them out to the cops. Anyone who would say no to this legislation, just like Prop 1 on the November ballot, is part of the American Taliban and is anti-American by definition, does not understand our constitutional rights, does not understand freedom. They only want control and tyranny. As for item 11, everyone who says yes, i.e. normal people, understand that the election, the primary election is over and the races were totally fair. Anyone who disputes item 11 is drunk on conspiracy theories. And I don't know what to tell you, there is no voter fraud. You, you people claim, Oliver Twist, Audra, you, you, you people like to tout, you know, this election stuff, Lana Cotton, show us the evidence. Show us the goddamn evidence you think that the election was stolen. There is none. So shut up, okay? Shut up about your conspiracy nonsense. Thank you.
Yeah, burst in the sixth row or disrupting the conduct of the board meeting. It's your first warning.
Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Ann Riddle here. I've come to speak about item three, the tobacco retail licensing program. I did however, look to tell you how much your comments going into consent items mean to me as I take notes to share with my county planning group and with the parent group with which I'm associated. And the clarification that you have all given to some of these items you care about have been really helpful because the actual titling, the consent items aren't always clear where some of these are going to be located or what facilities are going to be affected. And it's good to know about those items that each of you feel are important. So thank you for taking the time to clarify regarding your thoughts on the consent items. It matters. These are important items and to take them all as a unit and vote on them has a lot of difficulties built in, and your comments helped with that. As a parent and as a public health advocate, I support the tobacco retail licensing program, and I applaud the work that has gone in for many years to make this happen. And thank you Supervisor Vargas for your comments and Fletcher for recognizing Diane Jacobs' work in the past. I do have a comment about the sale of flavored tobacco products. I'm thrilled with it. Those of us who work with teams know how valuable this is. But I would plead on behalf of parents that we need to do something about flavored marijuana products as well, these high concentrated products that our young people are using, who are attracted primarily to their flavored content, and that that's equally important to any work we do around flavored tobacco products. Thank you for letting me share this concern.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller. Again, for the next caller, Peggy Walker. Please go ahead.
My name's Kathleen Lippett. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. As a public health practitioner, my graduate concentration was public health policies, policies that support healthy and safe choices while making unhealthy and unsafe choices more difficult. I want to thank the board for addressing the public health crisis from cigarette and electronic smoking devices with this tobacco retail ordinance, which was created to hold retailers accountable for responsible retail policies. I'd like to share some information from undo.org, whose campaign has documented the lies of big tobacco, which has destroyed the lives and health of millions in the U.S. and around the world. But I'd also would like to propose that the big marijuana industry is going to be no different, and anyone with a modicum of common sense does not believe that they will pay any attention to public health, just as the tobacco industry did not. Your support of this industry is disturbing on the, on so many levels. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Christina Mononkill.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Christina Mononkill, and I'm with Asian Solidarity Collective. I'm the associate director, and I'm calling in support of My Body, My Data Act, and I'm appreciative of Vice Chair Nora Vargas and Supervisor Tara Lawson-Rehman for bringing this proposed resolution forth. As a grassroots organization of over 700 members, ASC understands the vital importance of privacy and safety in our most impacted communities when seeking reproductive healthcare. Within our Asian communities, we too experience criminalization and harm with surveillance and misuse of data. This is why we are in support of federal legislation that can add a layer of protection for the reproductive justice rights of Black, Indigenous, Brown, queer, trans, and people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Chad Adapon. Shout out to everybody in person and on the phone for exposing the shortcomings and the struggles of this system. It is so rotten, and even having an ounce of, uh, access to housing resources, mental health resources, seems to be difficult time and time again, so thank you. I'm calling in support of agenda item number eight and in appreciation of Vice Chair Nora Vargas and Supervisor Tara Lawson-Rehman for bringing forward this proposed resolution to support the My Body, My Data Act. As a grassroots organization, we are in support of protecting the privacy and safety of our most impacted communities that seek reproductive healthcare. Federal legislation is imperative in protecting extremely private information and misuse of data that harms our communities. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
I'm speaking to item three. I'm a public health educator with a focus on youth alcohol, tobacco, and drug prevention. I would like to thank the board for recognizing the value of tobacco retail licensure. In a national survey by the Truth Initiative, 74% of teens who had used vape pods said they purchased them from a brick and mortar store. The TRL program will give the county the tools to monitor and enforce regulations on the sale of tobacco products. As you know, vaping is an epidemic among teenagers due to the easy accessibility of flavored e-cigarette products with nicotine levels much higher than traditional cigarettes. You know that a single puff bar has as much nicotine as 50 cigarettes, five zero. Most parents have no idea just how addictive these products are for their children. Preventing youth tobacco use will have a positive impact on so many lives. Nine out of 10 adults with substance use disorder begin smoking, drinking, or using other drugs before age 18. If we can stop that, if we can prevent that use in the teenage years, we are doing such a gift for the individual teens, their families, and for public health and society as a whole. I would ask also that you consider doing the same thing, um, in regard to marijuana if unfortunately, um, we do end up with more marijuana dispensaries because they operate in the same way with the flavored products that are also high THC and highly addictive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Joel listens on his phone, apparently. Item three, charging tobacco retailers a fee using the excuse of minors having access is complete fraud, just like Nathan's Money Pox has an emergency. Items four and five are both federal funds money grabs totaling $20 million. Item six, says volunteers of America Southwest spent tons of money that went unaccounted for and let their treatment facilities degrade, but now the county wants to buy it from their parent company and then spend another $10 million in repairs. What kind of recovery mansion is being built? Item seven will cost the state $12.4 million to build a 12-bed unit. Item eight supports Qualcomm daughter Sarah's My Body, My Data Act because Sarah, Nora, Tara, and Nathan's wife Lorena all belong to Run Women Run, pushers of taxpayer-funded abortions, and abortions for children without parental knowledge. Conflict of interest. Item nine admits that the county loses 23,000 people each year, which confirms the housing shortage line is a farce to push stack-and-pack 100-unit prison block housing. Item 10 includes $14,000 for trees and tents. That's what it said. Item 11, if only there really was accuracy in voting, then maybe we'd all have supervisors that actually follow their oaths and represent the wishes of their constituents. Item 12 is a dedication to the cult of sustainability with a new impact statement. Item 13 will make ChargePoint, Inc. the monopolistic provider for electric vehicle charging equipment and services for the county. ChargePoint's board of directors includes a former member of the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. Item 14, 44 years and the county still can't accept 15 acres of land to make a park. It's bananas, just like this jam-packed consent.
Thank you. And Sheriff Fletcher, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent calendar.
All right, thank you. We, um, will be voting, uh, on the consent calendar items two and 16 have been polled. Uh, we have a motion by Vice Chair Vargas, second by myself. Our first vote will be for items eight and nine. This is a vote only for items eight and nine. Please vote. So we want to do three different votes? All right. First vote will be on item eight. Please vote.
Sheriff Fletcher, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson, voting no, all other supervisors being present, and voting aye.
We will now vote on item nine.
Sheriff Fletcher, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond, voting no, all other supervisors being present, and voting aye.
We will now vote on the remaining items on consent, minus items two and 16, which have been polled.
Sheriff Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, and voting aye.
We're going to take up item 16 first. Uh, we will follow item 16 by item 23, and then we will return to the agenda in sequential order. Uh, today's proposed amendments to the compensation ordinance include much-needed strategies for recruitment and retention of public safety workers and medical workers throughout our system, but in particular in our county jails. Uh, the effort seeks new incentives for these positions, and I appreciate, uh, this action being initiated by Supervisors Desmond and Anderson in June. Uh, included in the proposed changes to the compensation ordinance are those authorizing higher pay and other incentives for deputy sheriff classifications, uh, creating new classifications promoting the recruitment and retention of nurses and mental health clinicians in our detention facilities. Uh, and I think it's vitally important that we address the need of public safety by making sure we are doing everything we can to support our deputies and support their recruitment and retention. Uh, we never want to be in a situation where mandatory overtime becomes the norm, uh, recognizing sometimes they like their overtime, but probably like it when, when they like it, and not having mandatory overtime, uh, be a norm for any of our employees. Um, the actions that we are taking here and are outlined, I think, can help us, uh, address those needs, uh, on the public safety side, address the need, uh, for our incredibly brave and heroic clinicians who work in our correctional facilities and the work that they have, um, and, uh, help us ensure not only public safety on the outside, but the safety, uh, of everyone who comes into our care and system, including the safety of our workers by ensuring proper staffing, uh, and help with morows. And so I, uh, am fully supportive of this effort and appreciate, um, all of the work that has been done. Uh, we will go to Supervisor Desmond quickly, and then, uh, we will carry on from there.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate the opportunity, and just want to say thank you very much to staff for bringing this forward and getting this done, and you've come up with some really great ideas in here. I'm just, uh, I guess I want to put the word out there, this, hopefully this is not one and done. If you've got more ideas or things like that that come forward on recruitment and retention that didn't make it into this board letter, you know, let us know whatever it is. I think, you know, bring, feel free to bring it back to my office or to the board or whatever that case may be, but I really appreciate the efforts, and, and if there's more work to be done, let's do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
I had some, uh, questions, just for clarity. I know that we're offering a $5,000 incentive for new civil engineers. I know that we have a backlog, uh, in my district of permits, but what are we, what are we doing, um, for retention issues? So I, we want to attract them, but what are we doing for, to retain them? Do I use my mic?
In the board letter, you'll see that we've added a 5% premium for the current engine, civil engineers, assistant engineers, and senior engineers as part of retention for our current engineers.
Great. And then I had a, an, a follow-up question, not on engineers, but, uh, uh, we looked at the night shift premium, and does that night shift apply to everybody, including a lieutenant's, or is it only for certain staff? And if it's only for certain staff, I just want to know the rationale.
Yes, it's only for certain staff, and I would need to defer to probably the sheriff on, or why that staff was selected, but that was the department's selection, and that's what we negotiated with the DSA.
Okay. I, you know, what, when the things that I'm, when I served in the legislature, one of the issues we had was, uh, frequently we neglected our managerial staff. They would find a better job elsewhere. And then all of a sudden, we had a bunch of entry-level folks and not the, the senior members to help guide them. So, um, uh, I don't know if the sheriff would like to comment, or I, I, I don't want to get ahead of you, Sheriff. What, how do you want us to proceed?
Let's ask the sheriff, if you, you were someone from the sheriff's department would like to address Supervisor Anderson's question.
Sheriff Fletcher, Honorable Board, thank you for the opportunity to come up here. Uh, when we, and first I want to thank, uh, before we answer that, all the work for all the people in the Department of Human Resources, Sheriff's Human Resources, Public Safety Group, County Labor, everyone that's been working on these proposals. Thank you very much. We think they're going to be very beneficial to our department. Um, in terms of the specific questions you're asking, uh, when we asked, I think we asked for the deputies and the sergeants that are working the night shift. These are the line deputies, the deputies that are working patrol and detentions, uh, they're working the, the shifts, basically they work 7:24 all week long. Uh, but we, we neglected to put the lieutenants in at that time. Lieutenants are also supervisors of these sergeants, these lieutenants that are, I'm sorry, and the deputies that are working at, actually at the exact same time that they're out there. So the lieutenants are, are not quite upper management or legislative, but they are the leaders, uh, on the night times and on the day times. And, uh, we have about 85 lieutenants altogether in our department. Any one time, we'll have about 35 or 40 of those working on the night shift, and they were, they were left out.
Uh, thank you. And I have one last question in, uh, I'm not sure where it goes to, but, um, I noticed in our recruitment, we're giving new deputies, uh, a $20,000 incentive, uh, which I support, but in it, it said they have to have one year of law enforcement experience. Uh, I know that sometimes we are post-certified, and if they had post-certified and they were 11 months' experience or six months' experience, is there, what is the rationale, uh, of the one-year experience? And is that cutting us off for future opportunity, uh, in, in such a tight market where everyone's competing for these highly qualified individuals?
That would be me again, sir. We, uh, when we, when we had discussed these, uh, I don't believe we brought up the, initially the, um, the people that graduate with a post certificate. Now normally, when you graduate in academy, uh, when we put someone through a regional academy, or another agency puts someone through, in San Diego, it's all the same regional academy, we all train together, but up and down the state, uh, the state has certified post, peace officer standards and training academies, it's a six-month-long academy, you can graduate with a post certificate, and that means you can go to work at any law enforcement agency at any time. Uh, what we left out in this, in this request was the people that go to college and obtain, they go through an academy, and they're, they're not a hiry. Like, for example, we, we have, we're anticipating putting 55 people in the next academy, and the sheriff's department is going to pay them while they go through the academy, they're salary their benefits or equipment. But there's a number of people that go to these same academies, they put themselves through, they have jobs, they have families. For example, last Friday, we hired a gentleman, uh, that has a family and had a full-time job, and he spent two years going to the academy at Southwestern College, so he graduated with a post certificate, a peace officer standard and training post certificate, just like I did when I graduated. Uh, under this current, uh, proposal, he would not qualify for that bonus, even though he would be coming in as a, a hire. And these people are very valuable, these people that, uh, all the local agencies want to recruit these folks who have put themselves through an academy at no pay, I mean, basically at their own expense and time. And we think that they, in the sheriff's department, we treat them coming in as laterals, uh, because they have that certificate like anybody else does. But, uh, under the current wording right now, they would not qualify for any of these, for that bonus, that lateral bonus.
By the way, thank you. Our post-training is by far the best in the nation. Other states pluck from us. In many states, law enforcement has no post-training, and we've, as a state, done an incredible job. So I, I understand how important that training is. Is, is, are these things that, I'm not sure how to proceed. Can we, the questions I have, and Sheriff, I'm going to flip it over to you.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Is one, is this something we can fix, and is this something that you would like to fix?
So I think, I think I'd like to make a motion to approve the comp ordinance with the amendment to include the lieutenants, uh, in the night differential. I think it's only right, they're working all night, just the same as everyone else. Um, on the second item, Supervisor Anderson, I think what we got to assess is a lateral transfer. I understand technically that's a lateral, they're coming in, they're also coming in with no law enforcement experience. So there's still entry-level deputies who have to go through the full probationary process. I feel like the lateral incentive is designed to get folks that have already been post-certified, already have law enforcement experience, come from another agency to our agency, and that's who the, the incentive is, is designed to attract. So it is, technically, they may be lateral, but they're still not experienced law enforcement. Is that correct, Sheriff, from my understanding?
You're, you're exactly correct. Uh, at the time, that was the initial intent of the proposal was for the people that are experienced working for other law enforcement agencies. But we also realized we're in a staffing shortage, and we have seven people right now from the Miramar College, uh, that are in our background process. We'll probably hire them before this, the second reading and this goes through, so they wouldn't qualify. But we also want to be able to attract as many people we can that are qualified, and whether it's a lateral peace officer or coming from college, they're all going to go through our training program.
We'll go to the CEO real quick, and we'll come back to Supervisor Anderson.
Well, uh, I, I'd like to just add this, and the CEO can, uh, address it as well. In many of the states, they don't have any post-training, and yet I think that we're applying this to them, and yet we have people, individuals who have far superior training, and they're not getting the same advantage. I, I just, uh, only because I served as the vice chair of public safety for 12 years and familiar with how, how much training we give our folks. In contrast, I don't want somebody because they decided to go to college and put themselves through it being penalized in any way.
Go to the CEO real quick.
Thank you, Sheriff Fletcher and Supervisor Anderson. Sheriff, thank you for being here. I think it's really important, this is a discussion, I'd like to go back with what Supervisor Desmond said at the beginning. Supervisor Desmond said at the beginning of kicking this off. We can always come back in a couple of weeks. Let's go back and think through this, let's talk to the sheriff, let's talk about whether that's appropriate for a brand-new officer versus somebody that's coming in with experience, that they would get the same lateral type of amount. $20,000 is a lot of money and particularly if there's somebody that hasn't. So, maybe there's something else that we should be considering and talk about it and then we can, obviously, we would have to negotiate that with the Deputy Sheriff's Association and then come back and bring something to that, to the full board, if I could ask.
No, that works for me and I think, I think, we want to attract these folks, right? And we want to get them and I totally understand that. We also don't want to disincentivize or create an unfair playing field. If you have someone who has 10 years' experience in another agency, they're coming in an amount. Someone who has no experience but post certification, they're coming in. So, maybe there's a different amount that we use for that category that still incentivizes them, gets us to the top of the list to get those folks in. And so I think maybe we'll, let's do a little work on that and figure out how we strike that proper balance and then move forward today with the comp ordinance, adding in the lieutenants. And then we'll come back, Sheriff, and we're committed to working with you on that.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Because we want everyone, look, we want your experienced laterals, we want your inexperienced laterals as well.
We want to hire.
And we want to figure out how we can get them in and get them staffed quickly. So, we have a motion by myself, second by Vice Chair Vargas. Let's go to our public speakers and then we will come back.
Let me just make one more question, Chair. I just want to verify with counsel, I think we can do the change on the lieutenants and then bring that back in the second reading and then we'll be fine. So, I just wanted to verify, we can make that change right now. Thank you very much.
May I make one more comment before I sit down? For all those people that are watching live right now, if you know anybody that wants a job, log on, log on to joinstsheriff.net, that's joinstsheriff.net, we'd like to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. So, before we go to public speakers, we have a motion and a second to amend, move forward, adding the lieutenants into the night differential and then an understanding that we will move forward with the lateral package of $20,000 and come back and work on the junior lateral program to help attract those folks in. Let me ask a clerk to call forward the speakers at this time.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 11 total requests to speak on item 16, seven in person and four by phone. Also note for the record that we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item 16 by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers and we'll start with those that are in favor of this item. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, Crystal Irving, Leslie Masland, thank you, and Tim Macedo. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
I've called in many times, this is my first time in person.
If you could pull your mic down closer to you, thank you. And please state your name for the audio record.
My name is Leslie Masland. I am a librarian with SDCL. The Rural Library Premium was fought for during our contract negotiations because our library technicians and librarians that work to bring the excellent county services to work to rural areas and far-flung areas of the county like Fallbrook, Julian, Ramona, and Hakumba. This means long commutes, handling wildfires, snow, and icy road conditions. And in many cases, these locations are the one county outpost for miles for residents to access any kind of county services. The Rural Library Premium will help with the recruitment and retention of qualified staff because without their staff running the buildings and ensuring that they are operational, clean, and safe for customers, these libraries are just closed county buildings, cold and desolate to people's needs. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I'd also like to invite forward Kathy Griffey. Griffey, thank you.
Chairman Fletcher, Honorable Board, my name is Tim Macedo. I'm an HSS at the El Cajon Family Resource Center. I'm here today to speak in favor of item number 16, but most importantly, bilingual pay. As an English-only speaker, I know how essential it is for customer service to have a fully functional bilingual staff. El Cajon has, as you all know, has a high immigrant population, Middle Eastern, Afghan, and we currently do not have enough staff on hand to meet those needs. A adding bilingual increase to, that was left out of the current contract for the SW unit, will increase recruitment. There's currently bilingual staff who are not accepting the bilingual premium because of the amount of extra work that it requires, because immigrant families tend to have larger families, they tend to have more income when it comes to different members of the family. So, there's a lot more complex than it is than, say, your average English-only family. And again, that giving the premium will bring out more recruitment, will better serve the public who we represent, and it is essential for us to operate at our FRC. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Griffey. I've been a public health nurse with the county for 30 years and I'd like to ask you to please vote and support the 16, number 16 amendments to the compensation ordinance. And in particular, there's a premium for the pharmacist at the psych unit. They also have direct patient care, they deal with very high-need patients, and this amendment covers that as well as other amendments that were needed to retain necessary qualified staff. Thank you.
As the next speakers coming forward, I'd like to invite the speakers in opposition of this item, Oliver Twist, Audra, and Paul Henken.
Okay, good morning, Chair Fletcher, Vice Chair Vargas, and Supervisors. My name is Crystal Irving and I'm always proud to be president of SEIU Local 221, but I am exceptionally proud today. Our members have worked hard to land this strong foundational contract for all workers represented by SEIU 221 and we look forward to continuing to build on this with a collaborative spirit. You've heard from some of our members about additional wins that we've secured for our members and I want to thank you all for that. We look forward to a resolution to the protective services worker issue as well. And I just want to say that you all have demonstrated your support for county workers, not just in words, but in actions and compensation. And I appreciate Supervisor Desmond saying that this is not a one-and-done situation and trust me, we will be back with more incentivizing ideas to address recruitment and retention. We look forward to continue partnering as we seek to address mental health and the deaths occurring in the jails. And I also look forward to continuing to visit our 24-hour facilities with Helen Robbins-Meyer, Michael Vu, and Nick Machium. It's truly a new day in our region. So, again, thank you so much. We're truly off to a great start, winning for county workers and for the entire county of San Diego. So, please vote yes on item 16. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Paul Henken. On the compensation ordinance, I see this as an experience issue. You guys and the sheriff should rehire the experienced people who you forced to retire through COVID mandates and forced overtime and all that and not waste tax dollars on incentivizing inexperienced replacements and show a bit of forgiveness. Hope everybody gets a fair deal and there are no weird restrictions or COVID mandates or monkeypox mandates. Second, I'd like to say you should be showing all of these people in here the same courtesy you'd want against gratuitous insults from, you know, various speakers. I mean, it's ridiculous and also, you know, things like polite clapping, that's not disrupting the conduct of this meeting. I'm sorry, Nathan, but, you know, there are some things that just make absolutely no sense and frankly, would be shot down in a court of law right away. Thank you.
And a final call for Oliver Twist.
His name, Audra. Did you bring any applications for the sheriff's department? On the phone, they're on the phone. Okay, so if I apply, are you going to discriminate? Probably. Because we know you guys need people that are going to do your bidding, so you have to bribe them now because you got rid of all the people that are actually going to stand up for what's right. Yeah, and then you just, you know, as long as you bribe people to come in, then you can have all the people that will do your bidding and bring in this new world order and like, arrest people for what? Free speech? And then just put them in jail? Yeah, maybe you need to think about what job they're doing because if you really didn't enforce these stupid policies, you would actually have people that would want to be in the department. Instead, you have to incentivize them to come, just like you have to incentivize or bribe or coerce children to take vaccines. And you need people that are going to stand there like an officer and refuse to go in and make sure that these children are not being murdered by vaccines. They'll actually laugh at you. So, that's the kind of people you need in this so that you guys can continue to push all that you're pushing. Because if you had anybody that would uphold your oath, none of you would be sitting there. And that's exactly why I will never be a cop, because you guys won't let me, because I would uphold my oath, like the oath that all of you took. Instead, you got to bribe people, right? Incentivize them to stay and be like, I don't know why they're leaving, but you want to talk about anticipated shortages as well? Why do you anticipate it? Hmm? It's interesting. Very interesting. You guys are so corrupt. That's why you got to have corrupt people in law enforcement to enforce stupid penal codes on the people.
Thank you. Now, here from those that requested to speak by phone, when it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'll remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll begin with our first caller.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is David Myers, lifelong resident of San Diego County, retired commando after 33 years in the sheriff's department. I applaud the board for bringing forward this measure to increase compensation for our sworn staff and our professional staff that work in very difficult situations within our county jail systems and our night shifts. But shame on you for taking so long and using it as an excuse to address the historic high rate of jail deaths. Apparently, 15 deaths in one year so far is the magic number for you to take action and use this compensation ordinance change as an excuse to address the jail deaths. Throwing more money at incompetent sheriff's leadership is not going to change policies or practices. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Kind of funny, Joe, how you always stare at your phone and forget to turn on your mic and now you don't even have the normal mic to use. Ah, sometimes these things happen and we learn. So, about this item, we do need qualified applicants for deputy sheriffs, not just people looking for a big incentive paycheck. And the same goes for nurses and mental health clinicians just looking for premiums and new hire signing bonuses. Big money doesn't guarantee big morals or ethics. In March and April of this year, all of you supervisors voted to reduce the salaries and benefits of the sheriff's department two different times. A total of almost $1.3 million was taken away from the sheriff's salaries and benefits in less than one month by these supervisors. And now you're all pretending to care about their financial incentives a few months later. Not to mention, you supervisors have told all the sheriffs they have to get that toxic COVID shot or they'll lose their funding. No matter the way the coin gets flipped, it looks like workers are losing. Then let's add on top of that, all you supervisors voted unanimously to permanently reduce the jail population, allowing criminals to walk away without serving any time for their crimes and thus be incentivized to commit more violent crimes. Sheriffs have the handcuffs on while the real criminals are being allowed to walk free. If you supervisors really want to keep sheriffs, nurses, and mental health clinicians, then you need to stop engaging in monkey business strategies of incentivizing criminals and forcing or coercing employees to get infection injections against their beliefs and against their rights. A change in the interim sheriff, replacing FBI-trained Anthony Ray, may also inspire those who actually want to uphold the Constitution for the United States of America as well as the California Constitution to consider joining the ranks and making a difference if you get out of their way.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. We have a motion by myself, second by Vice Chair Vargas. Let me ask counsel to please read into the record the change that is being made, the amendment being proposed on lieutenants.
Yes, pursuant to the direction of the motion, we would modify the proposed amendment to Section 1.6.5 Subsection C of the compensation ordinance to add sheriff's lieutenant class code 005780 and sheriff's detention lieutenant class code 005767 to the list of eligible classes for a 5% night shift premium.
Thank you. We'll go to Vice Chair Vargas.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. I'm happy, like I said, to second the motion, but I did want to take a moment just to acknowledge something that's really important about this compensation ordinance. You know, being fluent in more than one language, it provides a person the opportunity to have greater insight and opportunity to, you know, communicate with other people from other cultures and it is also a huge, social advantage, can open so many doors. It's pretty amazing to be able to speak and converse and express oneself in more than one language. And being bilingual actually creates economic opportunities for job, you know, for job security, et cetera, et cetera. But what I wanted to say is that, you know, when you're able to compensate folks for bilingual pay, what you're doing is really talking about equity and access, right? I think for those people who speak other languages. So, it's really, really, what I say, being bilingual is a superpower. I hope that other people can learn how to speak other languages. And more importantly, I think that as a county, I think it makes me really proud that this is something that we're doing as part of our bigger compensation package. We'll continue to work on making sure that information is accessible in different languages for our communities because that is really what it is all about, access and equity. So, I am really proud to support this and thank you to the county staff for doing all the work, great work that they did.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Yeah, again, I also want to thank our CIO and our county staff for bringing this forward. I, you know, I think we all know that this is long overdue, you know, for, the staff in our jails have been short-staffed and required to work overtime and put in so many sacrifices to keep us all safe. And it is, it's just been such a really difficult environment and I want you all to know that we hear you, we support you, and we are taking this action today. And I'm proud to support this action today because your service and your sacrifice has for too long gone unrecognized and uncompensated. And this has led to insignificant increases in, in a lot of the challenges and difficulties with recruitment and retention that we have all faced and staffing shortages. So, I think this is just such an important step forward to make sure that people are treated fairly and people are paid fairly, compensated fairly, but also to make sure that we're staffed appropriately, that we're able to actually hire and retain good people to serve our communities. So, thank you for everyone who's really worked on putting together this ordinance, your input from our county employees who've really been instrumental in really thinking about what are the kinds of compensation mechanisms that we really need to be, to treat folks fairly and to hire a great workforce for San Diego County as well as our county staff. And this is. and recruitment and retention for those to help us call, hire qualified analysts to deliver with much greater accountability, analytical rigor, and, and research chops some of the programs that we've all been so focused on improving and bringing forward. Because without those kind of analytical positions, we're really not in a position to know what's working and not working. So again, thank you for including that in the Compensation Ordinance. You know, and the just last, just want to say a huge shout out to, to the nurses and the staff in our jails and across the board who are doing so much for our community. So thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Sheriff Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're now going to take Item 23, Enacting Emergency Measures in San Diego County to try and prevent further deaths in our jail. The continued loss of life in our jails is something that requires us to continually ask ourselves, what more can we do? What else can we do? In October 2019, we asked for a series of recommendations around changes and to get those implemented. In June of 2020, we empowered the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board with more authority and staffing to work through those issues. In 2021, this board made significant increases in funding and staffing for mental health clinicians, drug treatment clinicians, the expansion of medication for addiction treatment. In March of 2022, our board embraced the findings of the state audit and appreciated the commitment of the Sheriff's Department to implement those recommendations and findings. But we are here today to continue our effort, to continue to do everything we can to improve the situation and conditions in our jail. We have seen a situation where we had a high number of suicides in our jails. Certainly in recent past, we seem to be doing better in that regard as we've seen a significant decline in the, in the number of suicides in our jail. But we are facing the reality of a, of a fentanyl and opioid crisis that is impacting our entire community. Overdose deaths are up significantly across the county and the jail population is a reflection of what is happening countywide. And so we see the increases outside the jails, we see the increases inside the jails. And in this case, that compels us to ask, what else can we do? What more can we do? And so I brought forward this measure today to direct the CIO and sheriff to work together and update our board on expediting the incentives and strategies we just adopted in Item 16, making sure those are getting in place as quickly as possible to help ensure adequate and appropriate staffing, developing new strategies for care and safety, including additional wellness teams and expanding access to medication for addiction treatment, having the Sheriff's Department allocate $200,000 for the latest body scanner technology and other avenues to support the intercept and stop drugs like fentanyl from entering our system, and authorize competitive solicitations for additional body scanners with the option to purchase up to eight of them. These measures combined with the measures we just took in Item 16, hopefully will help us get in a better position and continue to do everything we can to not only protect the safety of our workers and ensure their morale and stamina and all of the efforts they do, but also ensure we do everything we can to protect the health and safety of those who come into our custody. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve--
Mr. Chair, just so I understand, Item 2, I thought I pulled that. Are we going to get to that later?
Yeah, we said we were going to do 16, then 23--
No problem. I just wanted to make sure that I was following correctly. Thank you. And I'll be happy to second it if you wish.
Thank you. All right, let me ask the clerk to call forward the speakers, and when we come back, we'll go to Supervisor Desmond first.
Thank you, Sheriff Fletcher. We have 10 requests to speak on Item 23 for in-person and six by phone. Also note for the record that we received five e-commerce, one in favor, three in opposition, and one neutral. Any members of the public that requested to speak on Item 23 by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. We'll begin with those in favor of this item, followed by those in opposition. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, Paul Hinkin, followed by Crystal Irving, and then the speakers in opposition to this item, Audra and Sandra Martinez. Please come forward and state your name for the audio record. And again, you all have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, Paul Hinkin. It's great that the county is finally confronting and taking concrete actions to resolve this issue, and I wish them every success in this endeavor. We have been talking long enough while people died. Morale at the jails all over is low. This is partially due to firing those who are not vaxxed, even though they have much more stabilizing effect because of their experience. And what I, from what I read, working conditions are lousy. It's almost like jail personnel are so stressed that they're not watching the inmates that they're supposed to be watching. Maybe there should be a closely monitored club room or something like that for inmates who are not hardened criminals and shouldn't really be stuck in a cell for the long term. I also noticed that three jail deaths recently were after inmates who should have been searched and their drugs removed after they collapsed and were apparently given naloxone, Narcan right away. Naloxone only helps against opioids, so if you administer naloxone and observe for five minutes to see what the effect there is, you have lost five minutes while the patient continues his death spiral. Thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Crystal Irving, President of SEIU 221. I promise this is my last time. I just wanted to speak in support of this item. Of course, we represent nurses and mental health clinicians, as well as folks who do bookkeeping, laundry, food services at our detention facilities. And it's going to be really important that we do everything we can to address these jail deaths, especially those due to fentanyl getting into the jails. And so we just wanted to let you all know that you all have our support in this and our members would really like to collaborate in coming up with solutions to address this from the worker perspective as well. So we do hope to be included in the process of developing the plan to implement to make sure that folks don't die in custody. So thank you.
Next speaker, please.
He's the name Audra. I've experienced your jails, it's great, twice. On behalf of you guys, thank you, Helen. That was so sweet of you. I know you didn't want it to look like people are being arrested here, so I'm glad you did that. So you show people exactly what you're doing. Anyway, so it's interesting that you're having people die in prison. How is that from suicide? What are they using? Because they take everything that you can possibly use. They also scan you when you go in and then body pat you down to make sure there's no drugs. So I wonder, are the officers bringing in drugs? I mean, they need to make more money, right? Because, you know, they're, you're like, have a lack of these people. They don't even want to be there. They told me that. "We don't even want to be here. Just put on your mask. I don't even want to be here." So do you think they're going to do their job if they don't want to be there? I don't know. Would you guys do your job if you didn't want to be here? I don't know, you don't do it anyway, so I don't know why I'm asking that. But yeah, so, I don't know, it's just a reflection of the Sheriff's Department for sure. But the fact that you guys are putting people in there that aren't criminals-- Oh, I forgot, free speech is a crime. But also it's mental health, so you're just sticking all these mentally ill people in there and wondering why you have a problem. It's because you're not, you're like letting the criminals go and do whatever. It's like, let's, let's those pedophiles out. It's great. But let's put people in there that aren't even breaking the law. Because it's not against the law for free speech, Helen. It's not. You know that, right? Because you, did you take an oath? I'm pretty sure you did. It's interesting that we can just violate our oaths and arrest people for--
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Sandra Martinez. Unfortunately, I believe our local policies have probably created the bulk of this problem. Every death is tragic and drug-related deaths in jail are devastating and should not be occurring. As Sheriff Fletcher said, fentanyl in the jail is a reflection of the countywide problem. And I agree with that. I propose that these measures will only create a better way to bring drugs into the jail, building a better mousetrap. That's the old saying anyways. I would posit that instead, we stop the porous infiltration of fentanyl across our borders. Start with that. We can do measures in the meantime to assist people that are in jail, to help ensure that there isn't as much drugs coming in. But there's no point in stopping drugs from being in jails when we can't even stop them from coming into our own borders. So I think money should really be focused on controlling the border importation of fentanyl because that is truly where it's coming from. If you've looked at the statistics, you know San Diego had the largest fentanyl bust last year, or it might have been this year, I'm not sure of the date. And that continues because we've done nothing to address that issue. So let's, for once, actually address the root of the problem instead of treating the symptoms that are created by not addressing the root.
We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'll remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll begin with our first caller.
Hi again, my name is Dave Myers, lifelong resident of San Diego County. 33 years retired sheriff's commander with the San Diego Sheriff's Department. Until you actually negotiate with SEIU and DSA on ensuring that staff is included in any type of entry into a facility regarding contraband that could be brought in, you are going to continue to see the high rate of death. Sheriff Fletcher read off a list of items he claims were done to sow the flow of deaths in custody, yet it has exacerbated, it has increased. You continue to throw money at a problem with failed leadership and you're going to continue to get the worst outcomes. Failed leadership has directly contributed to the record-high jail deaths, and your support of that failed leadership is the very definition of insanity when it comes to stopping jail deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Truth. Isn't Dave Myers that Black Lives Matter terrorism supporter? I don't know. Remember how we were told tons of people were being killed in the jails? Oh, look, we're still being told that. According to the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board in their last annual report overview available on the county website, quote, "12 deaths occurred in the custody of the jails. One was a homicide, two were suicide, four were natural, and five were drug-related. All that died in custody were men. Six were white, four were African-American, and three were Latino," end quote. The actual facts, unlike what the supervisors had been saying, did not suggest that inmates were or are being systematically killed or left to die in the jail. And on May 10th, the supervisors hated when I pointed out those actual facts. No matter how much they wanted to, an increase of free deaths does not suggest that now there is suddenly a need for emergency measures, especially since the item mentions fentanyl poisoning as a new contributing factor and not necessarily bad conditions in the jails like what is being suggested. It's clear that the information provided by citizen boards is being twisted by these supervisors for personal agendas, including, as it states in the item, "the introduction of a $200,000 body scanner into a jail, name unmentioned, and the aim of purchasing up to eight body scanners in the future dystopia." With this kind of monkey business fudging the cause of the numbers and exaggerating the numbers overall and describing everything as an emergency, you can almost call this COVID or money pot. It's all bananas, including the locking up of innocent people behind monkey bars.
And Sheriff Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. We'll go to Supervisor Anderson. I'm sorry, Supervisor Desmond, then Supervisor Anderson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody's support on, you know, Item 16 here that went forward in the Sheriff's Department for, you know, getting more incentives and things like that for recruitment and retention. But, you know, I was really kind of shocked when I saw this, you know, the amount of fentanyl that's getting into our jails. It's just, it's crazy. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, you putting this forward and the $200,000 for the latest body scanner technology and things like that. You know, I just, this, unfortunately, jails are kind of a reflection of what's going on in society. And I agree with some of the speakers, they said, you know, that fentanyl comes, is coming across our poorest borders and, you know, as little we as a county can do about that. But, you know, I do think we can keep up the drumbeat against fentanyl, you know, it's still being the leading cause of deaths for people being 18 to 45, either, you know, out of jail, I'm not sure what the age group is in jail. But keeping up with our continued outreach for education on fentanyl, educating parents, educating kids in schools, and, and, you know, getting the word out about the dangers of fentanyl to everybody in San Diego County, if we can increase that. I know, I know we already asked for that once, but if there's ways to enhance that, definitely I think now would be a good time. But thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Sheriff Fletcher. I, I really appreciate your letter and I'm happy to support it. I did have some questions, though. Do we, we're getting new scanners. Do we scan all of the employees and everybody who enters the building? Or are we, or is there a delineation of who gets scanned?
Let me ask the sheriff, you can comment on that for us.
Thank you. At this time, we scan all the people that are arrested, the incarcerated persons. We are not scanning our employees at this time.
Over the course of history with our prison system, Charlie Manson would get cell phones from time to time in isolation. And one of the links was some employee smuggled it in because anybody who went to visit the prison got scanned. Is there a reason why, or if deaths continue because of illegal drugs in, in our jail system, is there any research that we're thinking in terms of to, to build a case of why we should be scanning or not scanning?
Let me tell you that we, we talked about this internally over the last, well, at least since you appointed me sheriff four months ago. And the Detentions Bureau's been talking about it before that time. We look back and over, and we investigate every allegation of someone bringing narcotics into the jail, and we've had those allegations. But over the last five years, we've had absolutely no, no proof, no concrete evidence, no, no cases sustained of anybody bringing narcotics in. So we're focusing the resources we have right now on where we know that drugs are coming in. There's two major ways. One is through the mail, and we have scanning and search procedures there, and the other's through body portage or carrying it through body cavities into the jail. And that's where the scanner will help us tremendously. We know that's where the narcotics are coming in, so that's where we're putting all of our efforts right now. But we're open to the idea in the future of possibly coming up with a way to search our folks. We'll have to work with our unions, we'll have to look at the logistics of doing that, maybe bringing an outside entity in to come in and be the person that scans our folks when they come in. And we're very aware of what the prisons do because we work with them closely. But at this time, that's not the, the area that we're moving in.
If, Mr. Chair and board members, if this isn't enough of a deterrent, then perhaps we can investigate that. You know, I took a lot of airline flights over the last few years, and all the flight attendants, everybody else goes through the scanner. And I'm just thinking, we're worried about the plane landing safely. Why wouldn't we have the same concern for everybody in the jail to protect them?
The sixth row, your comments are disrupting the proceedings of this meeting. This is your second warning. I'm sorry, Supervisor Anderson, continue your thought.
Well, I was pretty much done. I, I think that if this doesn't go far enough, I mean, if it's successful, fantastic. If it isn't, perhaps we could look at that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vargas.
I want to say thank you for bringing this board letter to us. And, you know, I think we've often said that one death is too many, but it's turning into a platitude. And when someone dies in our county jails, that is an entire family and community that's grieving. So we've had five deaths in one month, and it appears the main cause of death in our jails is fast becoming overdoses. And so as fentanyl overdoses deaths rise in our county-- And so as fentanyl overdoses deaths rise in our county, I think it's unacceptable. We have a hotspot of overdose deaths in the facilities. Totally within the control of law enforcement. So it's time, I think, to dedicate all necessary resources to halt the flow of drugs into our jails. But I think jails need more than just increased drugs monitoring and interception. I've been working since day one to figure out ways that we can protect and the health and well-being of our citizens, and so I think includes, absolutely includes our care and custody. And so I wanted to find out if the sheriff is enhancing the care and safety in our jails, and we need to see results from these efforts, right? And see, in the next 60 days, return to the board and, and an opportunity to hear in detail what is being done to solve the deaths, a plan. And I'm also particularly interested in whether the sheriff will be implementing Clive's recommendations to have the canine, can night, canine, the dogs, los perros, as in searches of all people entering detention facilities as well. So I just want to make sure we're making the necessary changes immediately, and I look forward to hearing from our sheriff's department in the future as well.
Got it. And we're happy to ensure a 60-day report back and update on this would be, would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
I just want to thank you for bringing this emergency action, Chair Fletcher. We are facing a crisis. We've had a crisis for a long time, but this July has been devastating, and it's, it's absolutely imperative that we take these actions. Incarceration should not be a death sentence, and it's just too many tragedies, and thank you for, for moving this forward. And I, I don't know if it'll be enough, but it is the first thing and the most that we can do today, and I think we will have to continue to see what else we might need to do in the very near future. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Lawson Reamer. We have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas, to adopt the recommendations, including the 60-day report back. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're going to break for lunch. We will reconvene at 12:45, where we will pick up our remaining items in sequential order, starting with Item 2. So we will stay in lunch recess until 12:45.